Let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order for Monday, or Tuesday, January 17. First item on the agenda is public comment. I have no green sheets. So we'll go on right to...
Well, we just mentioned that we had a lot of... I guess anything has been...
Or any other item that's part of a public hearing.
Well, it's not quasi-judicial.
The record is closed.
Records closed, though, John.
Yeah.
Sorry, as I said, I have to sit in there, so...
That's all right. I look kind of weird, too.
It is a legislative matter, but still, records closed, so... Okay? Okay, then, let's jump right into Gen. Item 2, the Multifamily Code Amendments. Knowing that Jeff wasn't going to be here, I sent out to you all a suggestion that we try to be efficient in rolling through this, and hopefully, everybody's had a chance to take a look at the multitude of code provision changes, and public response, and even some of our own comments. And if it works for you all, what I propose that we do, there are six topical areas, and as we address each of those six, first, just go around the table and identify by row, if we could, which item might have some significance, and then we could focus on those. And items that aren't identified, let staff go ahead and assume that their recommendation that they make at the end of that, or for that particular topic, be approved by us. Is that fair to everybody? Steve?
Just as a sugge... I did mine by the actual numbers in the code.
Okay.
Because in some cases, there weren't... It wasn't a thing there, so I just did mine that way, which can be mapped to the table.
It can be mapped on the table. Yeah. So... John, Rick, Bill, you all okay with that?
Well, just so we know why we have some urgency, it would be helpful to hear from Alyssa, why we only have this meeting.
Okay.
So, maybe I'm overly optimistic, but I actually think you can get through it in a meeting and a half. There is a City Council public hearing scheduled for February. They only hold public hearings once a month, so if we... If you all are not able to get through these by the end of next meeting, the City Council would not hold a public hearing on this until April, as they don't hold public hearings during the month of March due to their break, which is actually quite a long time between now and then. I would... And also, a lot of these code amendments have been... Were part of the original ICS, and the recommendations date back to probably 2009. So these have... I think they're going to have to hear from some, but these have been hanging out for quite a while. I mean, it's not an urgency that it's... In terms of... Well, in my opinion, it's not an urgency that, you know, you have to get through them today, but you do have, you know, part of Monday to get through them, and they have been around for a while.
Okay. Thank you. That helps me.
Steve?
I just wanted to make the comment that only the first four are from the ICS. The other ones were added on later, and so if we were worried about urgency from the ICS standpoint, I would focus on the first four, and, you know, if... I don't know what... Just because the last two were added on by staff recently, they aren't part of that three-year study.
Okay. Well, let's see how far we get. Rick?
I'm wondering, Randy, if it would be... If of any of the major... The six major items, if there's any of them that the commission doesn't have an issue with. We might be able to just read those, the staff recommendations. The one I'm thinking of is the garbage recycle screening.
Well, all right. Let's take...
I'm just suggesting that we might be able to at least give staff...
On page 63.
Yeah. Along with that, the staff will think we're moving along faster if we get a couple of them done in a hurry.
Thanks.
If you take a look at page 63, and Steve, that code is 9.5500?
Right, no, I had a couple of concerns with that.
You did? Okay.
Mainly because of the limitations to the scope.
Okay. If you did, then let's just back away from it and go through it.
I think they're minor, but...
Yeah, that's fine. So, thanks for your suggestion, Rick.
I'm just trying to give staff that first carrot, you know?
So if we could, let's take a look at the Multifamily Open Space Proposals. The chart begins on page 53 of the AIS, and runs for several pages. And if we could, what I'll ask is we go around, if you could identify what page, and then what row, just for starters, and I'll put your names by that, and then we'll come back and go through them. Okay? Bill, do you have any issues on the Multifamily Open Space?
I just have a couple of maybe comments and questions. Page 53 on the second one, as far as open space requirements for nodal development.
Okay.
Then on page 54, again, the second one, on the outdoor common space minimum dimension, which also tracks through to page 55, on much the same thing, and then just the balcony sizes, which I think is the last one on that, page 55, and then the private open space, as far as the definition of enclosed.
Which is what?
Second one. It's the first full one. It's 9B on page 55.
Looks like that takes two of them, or all three of them, 9B?
Well, really, just the first one is the main.
Okay.
For me, it's just a definition of enclosed.
Okay.
And then, page 56, again, the definition of enclosed. Let's see. And then on... The last one on page 56, on the definition of balcony. We just had a couple of comments or word smithing.
But on page 56, did you have two of them?
Well, the other one is on... Just revolves around definition of enclosed.
Which one is that?
That would be on that one. It'd be kind of the first and the second one. It's kind of...
I'm sorry. What did we have on that?
56.
They kind of blend together in my thought process.
Anything else?
No.
Rick?
Actually, I got my question answered by staff earlier today on page 53. I have a question on the third item on 54, which also... And then the last item on 54, which runs over to 55, I have just a couple of questions and comments. The second item on... Second full item on 55, I have a comment. I, like Bill, have a comment on the 6x6 balcony. And then just a... I'd like to have a brief discussion on adjustment review on page 56.
Which row?
Adjust... Adjustment review in general, which would be the second, third from the bottom.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
John Belcher?
Can you come back around to me, please?
Okay. John Jaworski?
Yeah, I'm having a little difficulty, because I didn't do it the way that you're suggesting, in that I thought we would look at the draft proposals and check the codes by the codes, and then refer back to these if need be. And I'm having a... And since everyone is talking with pages versus this, it's hard for me to track where they are real quickly as to what they're doing. So with that, I think two of the things that I have had concerns with on the first page 53 have been already mentioned. Except, I don't know if anyone mentioned 9A1C2, even though it says it could be changed to glaze, or... They didn't change it to war, so we either have to make something on that, I believe, or we...
So, John, I'll put your name by that one.
I did 9A2C, page 74. I did 9B1, page 75. I had a question on height of 3 inches. On 92, no wall needed...
This isn't in the code?
Yeah. 9B2, no wall needs to be provided. 93, same as mentioned earlier, on the size of the...
Maybe if you want a little slower, I think.
Oh, all right.
I'm sorry. Is that okay?
9C1...
Okay. 9... Let's just find it here.
Yeah, I can do it by...
That's okay. That's okay. We'll get there. 9C1?
Mm-hmm.
Is that part of open space credit?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had a question, 9C2?
9C2.
I couldn't find where they said it was on page 72. And I also have questions under adjustment review, which I believe was 8C. Is that part of what we're talking about?
I don't think we're doing 8 yet, are we? Or is that part of this one, Alyssa?
It's adjustment review.
Adjustment review.
It's on page 76 in the code.
Yeah, that is part of this particular one.
It's 9.8030, you know, parenthesis 8.
It's the adjustment review that's specific to multifamily and open space.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find where it might be on the table.
Oh, it's a...
It's the same one I talked about.
Oh, okay.
56 at the bottom.
Okay. That take care of it, John?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, again, I did mine by the code, but I think the only... I had one that was related to the definitions of 9... Code point 9.0500. I'm not sure that's in the table at all.
No, it is. It's the very last one.
Very last one.
Last thing on the table. Yeah. Somebody has that one.
And then I have a question on, I guess you would call it, the first line on page 53, which is open space requirements. And I'm mapping these back and forth here. And on... This is section 2B, 2C, outdoor common note space. I think this is probably mentioned in the table. It's where the but's a property line, so it's...
This is A2C, Steve?
Is that correct?
9A2C.
Yeah, that one we've got highlighted as well.
Yeah. And, yeah, I think there's... It's already been highlighted. And then... And then 9509B, which is the private open space, the balcony, that's also been mentioned.
Yes.
And then... Then number 2, that was crossed out about the private open space, that would be... Let's see. That would be B2. The old B2, I guess. I think that's probably meant, maybe, mentioned here. If it is, it would be...
9B2, Bill.
That's the first one on page 90, 56.
56, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Let's see. And we've already mentioned the adjustment review, so that's fine.
Okay. That take care of you?
Yep.
And the ones I have identified have already been listed. So Alyssa?
Do we need to round back to Belcher?
Oh, sorry. John, okay.
Sure. Thank you. Let's see, on page 55, private open space, one I'd like to talk about, how we can certify the balconies of the building R1. Forgive me, I have to scroll through my computer here. On page 65, just a third from the bottom.
65 or 55?
Well, this says AIS, page 65, on my electronic reading.
Okay. Maybe jumping ahead there.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I jumped ahead way.
Okay.
We're just on multifamily right now.
Oh, we're just doing that one. Okay, then I'm good. Sorry. Forgive me.
Okay.
Did we miss any?
Couple. So, okay, let's jump right into... I'm going to go by the AIS page. This is page 53, the first row. It's table 9.55009, open space requirements. Steve, you're... You had concerns about that.
Yes. So, I wanted to provide a little... Just a sentence to a background is, this change came out of the Multifamily Dwelling Committee of the ICS, and our charge was only to look at multifamily zones, R2, R3, and R4. But from my point of view, if we're trying to fix the code, we should fix the code. And this... I would recommend removing the minimum density exemption of open space from all zones. This was a bad idea to begin with when it was passed. There's no other jurisdiction in the U.S. that we know that provides an amenity... An incentive to remove amenities for density. I think if we're going to try to provide incentives for density, we should look at how Portland does it, which is you add amenities and you can go higher than the allowed density even. So I just don't think it makes sense. And particularly in... Do we have a zoning map in here? We do?
No.
If you look at where... I'm just... If you look at where development is happening now in Western University neighborhood, there's still development going on in the R3, not very much in the R4. There's not a lot of vacant property, or property that's undervalued enough to basically pull it out. What we're seeing now is, because there's no demand for commercial or general office, we have a whole strip of general office between High and Pearl. That's being developed now for residential, in some cases, and we see now the commercial that was from Pearl over to Willamette, not being developed for commercial, but it's, you know, the newest development there is a big mixed-use thing with a very small amount of commercial, but it's primarily housing. So we're seeing a lot of housing going in, in these other zones. And so, to me, it doesn't make sense to, you know, fix it in the R2 and R3, 4 zones, and not fix it in the other zones. The downtown zone is already... Has an exemption for density. Any other place in the city that we want to have an exemption for open space in the zone, we can, you know, the... You know, we're free to do that, but it just doesn't make sense to have this exemption here. It sends the wrong message. I use the analogy of fire and life safety. Would we reduce the, you know, allow developers to increase the dimensions between stairways for access if you had higher density? Well, we wouldn't do that, but obviously, if we did that, developers could, you know, build higher density. They'd have fewer stairways or, you know, regress points. But it just wouldn't make sense. And the same thing here. In the highest-density projects, you don't want to have no open space, particularly in these... Particularly in these... In the older parts of town where there is no... There is going to be no park, you know, park area increases. Western University has the smallest amount of neighborhood park per capita. It's something like 1/5 of the value that's used in New York City. And, you know, there's no plans to buy any more parkland in these urban neighborhoods. It's just too expensive. So that's why I'm a... My point of view is fix it now, rather than, you know, come back and fix it two years later.
So Steve, are you suggesting that we proceed with the draft proposal that says the open space exemption would be removed from R2, R3, and R4, and C3? Are you suggesting something different?
No, I'm suggesting the proposal that it comments on, which is the public comment, remove open space from all zones.
Remove the exemption.
Yeah, remove the open space exemption from all zones. And the way I would handle that would be, just to drop off the whole bottom of the table in 9.5009, that has this table where minimum dimension for density for exemption from open space, that part of the table just goes away.
Other commissioner statements? Rick?
I think just a little bit of a comment here, so we can frame this a little bit. The... And I'm not using this as a position, just as a kind of a clarity of point, but the original purpose of the exemptions and things was to try to create a higher density projects. It was the idea of reducing parking, reducing open space, and so on. So it was a past attempt at trying to figure out a way to create a higher density. Not suggesting it was successful, not successful, or anything else, but there was a reason for that in the past. It wasn't just put in the code for no reason at all. And I think, to a certain extent, it probably created more density in those areas with these exemptions, right or wrong. That's, I think, sort of the background of what that was.
Steve?
I put together some data that was sent around as part of the ICS, and, you know, might be helpful. It's a list of all the multifamily projects up...
New data?
Pardon?
New data?
Well, it's... It's been in the record for ICS, so...
I'm not sure it's part of the record for this particular code amendment.
Okay. Well, anyway, my point of view is, anyone can go back and look at it, and you see the highest-density projects were the ones built before the code changed. That's just the way it is. You find the highest-density projects in the Western University neighborhood were built in the '90s, not in... Not in the last few years. And, you know, there are some, you know, some recent examples when they're... Where they're getting up to higher density. But generally, what they do is they just go and hit that 80 percent plateau, and then they're done. Whereas in the old days, they went and they, you know, if they could max it out, they did. And not only that, they did it without short, you know, shortchanging on parking or on setbacks.
Any response, Alyssa?
No. I mean, I think my position is still what we put into the table, that it makes sense to remove it for the residential, but I would have concerns about removing it for the commercial, just thinking citywide. I know that there are neighborhood-specific issues, but these do apply citywide.
How do you feel around the table here, folks? John?
Well, I like Steve's idea of providing incentives, adding incentives when people meet density standards, but I don't know how we would make all that happen today. I don't know if we want to apply this for further... Which immediately takes more time to get there, but that's sort of a fundamental change in the way we're doing business. I might support it, but I certainly want to look at it more.
John?
Yeah, it's hard to assimilate all the information that's coming from just these few issues of codes. My question in this regard would be, I can see doing that, and my question would be, if you have this exemption, which gets back to nonconforming, if you have this exemption and you now want to retrofit that commercial building and have it do something else, does that exemption for open space still apply, or does it change to what they're doing in an existing building in that area?
Look at me.
I mean, because I think that relates to this, because if it doesn't change, and they can do something else and still have that exemption that was ever there, because it doesn't include that, then does that mean... Then I would be more supportive of what is being proposed, that just be renewed.
In a commercial zone, obviously, they can convert, or change, or add to that structure any commercial use that would be permitted outright. If they were wanting to increase the density on that project, they would have to comply with current code. If that changed, they'd have to then comply with open space, yes. So that would be the question, I guess, is, you know, do we want to remove those from the legal nonconforming situation? We can do that through our code by saying anything established prior to a certain change or date and time. Can remove that from the legal nonconforming situation, but that would be the thing to look at, because it could potentially, yes.
Steve?
Yeah. My understanding, and I could be wrong, is we're talking about open space for multifamily when it's added in these zones, so it's not the commercial zone itself. We're only talking about if they added multifamily. So, in other words, it doesn't affect open space in commercial zones, only if you decided to redevelop it and add, you know, make it a mixed-use center and add, you know, a number of stories of... If I'm incorrect, I'd like staff for me to correct me.
Well, currently, yeah. That's the...
What's your press to do it in the C1, C2, and GO right now?
Well, my press is to do it in C2 and GO, because basically, that's where the development is going on in Western University. There's a lot of pressure to develop that now for housing, because there isn't a market for that commercial general office zone. And it's, you know, it's between High Street and Willamette. You know, you can look at the... You've got a bunch of clinics that went in there, and there are no more clinics going in there. They're all moving out, so those spaces are actually being reduced in rental property value. You know, you see things moving in there that would never have been there in there There's still older houses that are rented that could be redeveloped.
Rick?
I'm probably going to side more with staff on this, and it's because it's one thing if we were talking about West University and SUNA, but we're actually talking about applying this everywhere. And I have a real concern about always with the one-size-fits-all, because I don't think we've studied it well enough to understand what ramifications it may have for redevelopment along our commercial corridors. And I don't think that we really presented this information enough to the public, for the public as a whole outside of West University and SUNA, to understand that this may have effect on them. And I have a real concern about the blanket approach, because we have a lot of commercial lands, and the study we're doing for Envision Eugene right now, already, the models that we're building already indicate we're going to have a real stretch on even trying to redevelop anything in our commercial cores over the next 20 years, much less in other... With other types of redevelopment. So I'm a little concerned about just a wholesale application of this in areas that we really haven't studied or really understand the ramifications, because we're talking about all C2, C1, C2, GO. I understand your concern in the West University, but that's kind of a small section of our entire community that this would have an effect on. Now, I would strongly support the idea of further studies with regard to that.
John?
Well, I'm going to read with Rick from the other side, and that is that, you know, C1, C2, and GO are probably more likely to be near low-density residential, and therefore more impactful, however, I think this is going to be a very ripe topic for discussion on how we're going to implement Envision Eugene, because that's where this is going to end.
Yeah.
And I know that's coming not as quickly as this, but it should be coming more quickly than, let's talk about it someday. I think it needs to look at, be looked at as a gestalt, not all the things we're trying to do here, which is including increasing density in those areas compatible with the neighborhoods. And I'm not sure just changing it for the zones is the answer. I think it needs more look. So I think it's extremely important, I think, when you look at it very quickly with Envision Eugene. I'm not ready here.
Given the sentiment, I was going to suggest, you know, there are two ways we can go. One way, we can postpone this altogether, or one way... The other way is if people are comfortable with doing it in, say, West University, then we apply the C2 and GO zones, you know, the exemptions not allowed in those, you know, in that zone, or maybe in, you know...
First words of the staff on that, parcelling that, so just applicable to a couple of areas.
Well, clearly, we do that in other parts of the code. So we have done that. I did want to just point out one thing about the applicability of the multifamily standards. So they don't apply downtown, and they also don't apply to mixed-use buildings when the ground floor is in commercial use. So if you're in the C2 zone, and the ground floor is in commercial use, and the upper floors are residential, these standards will not apply. Just something to keep in mind.
See, that's what I was saying. That's what I was trying to bring out, when you... But I called it retrofit.
Yeah.
Okay. Rick?
Well, a clarification on that. You build a commercial building... You build a multi-use building with commercial ground floor, and this is what John was getting at, is... And then at some point, that... Because we've never really studied how much retail or how much commercial we really need to support our residential. And we know that a lot of the problems with mixed use is that commercial first floor... mixed use is that commercial first floor is a real problem to rent, do anything with. So then, as a city, you build this project, you have, you get the exemption, and then, as you were pointing out, you come back and say, well, my choice is I get to leave the first floor considerably sit vacant, which doesn't help the pedestrian orientation of our community, or I can change it to residential. Well, by the way, you can't do that, because now you don't have the open space requirement, because you didn't build that. So, I mean, I understand, because that was sort of what you and I chatted a little bit about this morning, but again, how do we rectify that particular problem if I come in and say, well, my choice is, I tried for five years, it sat vacant for five years, I got interested in maybe making it some type of residential-type use, but again, you come back and say, well, can't do that.
Right now, the commercial's not allowed on the ground floor in C2, correct?
Commercial.
Or not commercial, residential, sorry.
Well, it's, no, I mean, I wouldn't say, so there's a percentage.
Okay.
So the code has a table that requires a certain percentage of the frontage, so we can look at that. I think it's 60% has to be in commercial use per the table in C2.
So I'm thinking, if you're talking about, you know, if a future code amendment comes along and says you can have, you know, 100% of the ground floor could be residential, that would be a good time to revisit the nonconformity, rather than kind of taking care of that now when it's not something that's allowed.
Oh, let's try to step through-
I certainly don't like the mixing that we're talking about doing here.
Let's try to step through this little bit at a time, okay? Let's start with the draft proposal. That would remove the open space exemption from R2, R3, R4, and C3. Are people okay with that? Is there anybody not okay with that?
I just have a question. I don't know what the value of the, isn't C3 just downtown?
It is just, it's downtown.
That's why we're taking it out, because it didn't make sense that you can have it in here.
Right.
It doesn't apply, so.
But it, yeah, it just doesn't, I mean, to me, it just didn't make sense. We already exempted them from open space, so, you know.
Does it hurt to take it out?
No, 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 it's fine. It's just, you know, to me, it just didn't make sense, because it's already exempt, so we're-
I'm sorry, what?
C3 is already exempt from open space, so, you know, it doesn't matter that we say it's allowed, because it's still exempt in another part of the code, so it's just inconsistent.
Right.
Okay. Is there anybody opposed to taking the open space exemption out of R2, R3, R4, and C3? Rick?
I guess I'll bring this topic up right now. I'm not opposed to the removal of the exemption. What I'm opposed to is the chipping away at our code regarding compact urban development. And there's several issues throughout this document which I have concern about. That is, that when we talk about, we're not there yet, we talk about bike, we talk about parking in the past where we increased car parking, we're now talking about increasing bike, we're talking about increasing open space. All of those amenities have a cost associated with them in the development of a piece of real estate. None of them create any revenue back to the real estate, which means you're increasing cost and possibly reducing revenue, because you don't have the size of space. It's the same when we talk about mass. We reduce mass, we don't have as much living space, generates the rents to support it. My concern gets to be, is that we are chipping away a little at a time, and then all of a sudden, one day, we wake up and go, God, we're not getting anything done. And then we sit around a year or two or sometimes very late and say, what do we do to incentivize these kinds of changes in our code to make things start to happen? And unfortunately, it tends to happen too late after we've chipped away too much. So I have a real problem with the way that we are planning as a just chipping-away process. I don't think it really gets to the question we're after in this community, is how do we better use our land in an appropriate way to intensify and not move our urban growth boundary. So this is just another one of those elements that I continually see that we are chipping away at. And I'm not against any one of these things necessarily. I'm against the whole process of just kind of chipping away at the code that all of a sudden we say, well, why don't we have any redevelopment? I think as we're going to be presented in the next few weeks, whenever we come forth with a TRG work, we are already developing a model that says, we're likely, we likely don't have the economics in this community to do any redevelopment or very little redevelopment over the next 20 years. And we had people come to a meeting last week, developers talk about, all we do is keep taking things away all the time to make it more hard, more difficult to develop and not making anything work, so that we are getting better redevelopment in our community. So I'm going to be voting against several of the items in here for that reason, not because I'm against it. I don't see us doing a real good approach to how we're going to redevelop our community in a way that really benefits our community. So.
Okay. John?
Well, this is the challenge of trying to change the code right before you change the way we live in the city entirely.
Right.
You know, I am certainly supportive of the concern that there should be bonuses that make life better for both the developer and the community. And it seems contraindicated to me that you're increasing density and you're reducing open space. It just, that's the challenge that I see, if you say the term. You're taking away one of the things you need in order to make the density work. So, actually, that's not true. You're not taking it away. You're reducing the mitigation that open space provides as you get denser. And that seems contraindicated to me. But I also am very sensitive to the concern that you have, is we can set up a city that can't do anything, too. So that's why, on the eve of hopefully having a very major look on how we do things in the city in whole, this is a little challenging to look at, but I still support it.
Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on what Rick mentioned, because there's one thing that I think there's a misconception is, the parking standard, before that went in, 80% of the projects met or exceeded that proposed standard. So what you were, all of the better projects met or exceeded the parking that we, the parking code that we changed to. That was in West University, and soon it was a higher, even higher, 90%. 90% of the projects met that code requirement before we ever even put it in place. So what you were doing, you were eliminating the ones that were taking advantage of the system. In other words, from my point of view, we were creating a level playing field. The better developers wanted to make sure they had adequate parking, so they provided it. But other developers could go in there and not provide it and essentially offload their, you know, offload their pollution on the neighborhood and other areas. So it's, you know, that one, I mean, this one is a little different, but parking, I have to make the point that, you know, we didn't really change how development happens, because it was happening that way beforehand. We just eliminated the, you know, the worst, some of the, you know, worst developments.
Folks, we're 40 minutes into the meeting and we're on the very first item. I think we need to just start thumbs up or thumbs down, do a count, however it shakes out. That's the way staff needs to probably roll with it, okay? So let's try to walk through this again. Again, the draft proposal eliminates the open space exemption from R2, R3, R4, and C3. Who is opposed to that? Okay, it looks like you got a six to nothing count on that one, Alyssa. So then, let's move over to, let's first move over to the PC comments, and this would remove the open space exemption for multifamily developments in the R1 low-density residential zone. Multifamily in R1. Who is opposed to that? Sounds like you got six to nothing there. The second PC comment, remove open space exemption for multifamily in the C1 neighborhood. Who is opposed to that one? I think I've got to be opposed to that one. So it looks like you have four to two in favor of that, Alyssa.
Of removing that exemption?
Yes. Remove the open space exemption for C1. Let's-
But that's, it is-
You okay?
Wait. He was asking about C1, whether or not you would propose removing the exemption, the base exemption in C1.
Staff is recommending to retain it.
Correct.
Okay.
And you are recommending, okay, so it's actually 3-3.
3-3, okay. And then, let's jump ahead, and I think this goes to Steve's recommendation, that we remove the open space exemption for multifamily developments in the C2 and GO zones. Who would be opposed to that? I'm sticking with the negative here, but-
Yeah, I'm trying to chase your negatives.
Yeah. Who would be in favor, then, of removing the open space exemption for multifamily in C2 and GO?
At this time?
Three?
No, I don't want to do it at this point.
Okay, so we've got Steve, we have John Jaworski, right, John?
Yeah.
Removing the open space exemption. I'm against it, John's against it.
Against it.
Against it, against it. So you have four to two against C2 and GO. Okay? Does that cover it?
There's the all-other zones, which is typically the special area zones, which would be Walnut in particular, but some of the other special area zones as well.
Yeah, okay, so let's do that. At this time, who would be in favor of removing the open space exemption from all the other zones?
I have a question.
Yep.
Because I was going to ask what the next block meant. Does nodal development fall into all other?
No, so this is all-other base zones, so some of the special areas zones is really what it's referring to.
Okay, so all, okay.
Who would be in favor of that, all-other zones?
Question.
Rick?
You just made a comment that, so you're talking about Chase-
Correct.
Walnut.
Correct.
Walnut, or Whittaker-
These are mostly our nodal development areas, correct.
But Whittaker Special Use District.
I believe that the multifamily apply there as well, yes.
This is a terrible way to do planning.
Yeah. Steve?
I just have a question. Does this apply to the areas that have these special area studies?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what we're talking about, sorry.
Is it possible we could separate it out, so we're dealing with the question, so we could separate it out, so it's like the Jefferson Special Area Zone, which is a residential zone versus all of these other, you know, these, you have two of them kinds, like, I mean, never mind.
We've got a bunch of different kinds.
Yeah, there's, this is kind of the catch-all of a lot of different zones.
I'm not ready to go there at this time. John?
A process suggestion. Let's finish this up.
Yeah, so, question goes, who would be in favor of removing the exemption from all the other zones? Sounds like we've got zero in favor, six against. Okay?
Maybe as we find the rows that people have issues with, we focus on that part of the row they have an issue with, rather than anything that may be on that row.
We attempted that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Steve, we're following grammar.
Well, let's see what we do on the second row, okay? I think we're done with the first row.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Second row, Bill, this was yours.
My comment here was really just providing the exemption from the open space requirements if they achieve a certain density in the nodal development, because I know the nodal development has some minimums and maximums, yeah.
They have a minimum density, and then actually, the density in the table is actually even higher than that.
Yes. And I guess, I guess my comment is I would support removing the exemption if they meet certain density requirements within that zone, what that is.
Okay. And the staff's suggestion was to whatever the density was called out in the table.
Okay.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I was just told that all-other zones did not mean nodal development, so therefore, they're not in the table.
So the all-other zones, so there's a difference between the base zones, which would, some of the special areas have a base zone. Jefferson West Side is a special area zone. It's the Jefferson West Side Special Area Zone. And then, to confuse everybody, there are some nodal development areas that just have a nodal development overlay. Crescent Village, for instance, has zoning of C2 and R4, and then it has the, it doesn't have a special area zone, it just has the overlay.
So when I look at this chart, all-other zones includes nodal development. If I want to know what the percentage of developed site and what the percentage of-
It includes nodal development areas that have what's called a special area zone. It doesn't include, it wouldn't include Crescent Village, because that-
So what would their minimum be? Then that's what I'm trying to find out, if I'm going to endorse this. What is, what are they needing?
You would look at, right now, today, you would need to look at the base zone. So if the R4 portion, today, if they met 90 units per net acre, they would be exempt from the open space requirement. So this is all about the base zone.
They would be exempt from the open space requirements, but they would just need to meet the minimum, right? They would be exempt of all open space?
Completely exempt.
Completely exempt.
That's what this table does, right. If somebody meets that density on that last.
Except we just proposed the limit.
Right, you just, right.
Rick?
I believe that Crescent Village and Lower River Road actually have a nodal zone designation.
Correct. They have an overlay, so they, yes.
No, they have the overlay and the zone.
It's an overs, no, it's just an overlay zone.
Metroplan designation.
They have a metroplan designation, but then they also have the overlay zone, the ND overlay zone.
And how is that not all-other zones?
That's a base zone we're talking about.
These are all base zones, right.
That's, we're talking about overlay zone, the ND.
I guess, I mean, part of the reason we established our nodal development process is so that it could be an all-inclusive process on how you make that type of thing work. And it's, I have a little concern, again, that we're, one time, we're tweaking something, and we don't even understand what it may be and how it may affect other things that go on in a planned unit development, unless I'm missing what we're trying to accomplish here. It seems to me that we need to figure out a way how to really deal with how we want things to be developed in our community, not continually say, well, let's take a little tweak here and a little tweak there. This doesn't seem to be good planning in this process. I mean, a lot of this stuff all came forth because of West University and SUNA, which is a different issue than the community as a whole with a lot of other things. But now we're talking about how does it affect a lot of other properties throughout our community, without really studying the impacts of these things.
John?
I guess from a pragmatic perspective, are we really worried about any new nodal development zones?
Don't know. Got some out there.
Yeah, but it seems like that ship has sailed and sunk.
I agree.
Steve?
I assume we're just talking about the residential, the R4 that's in this nodal zone, right?
I mean, the nodal development zones have R1, R2, R3, R4, as well as the commercial zone.
But we've already decided that we're only going to remove the exemption from R2, R3, and R4. So the point is, I mean, again, from my point of view, it's just, this is bad policy to remove open space from high-density residential zones. And we have an adjustment review process as part of this as well, that they can adjust how they provide that, which seems like it fits in completely with any nodal development zone that's going to use a PUD, which I assume they would. But it's just, it's just bad planning policy to remove open space from the highest-density projects. They already have to meet a minimum density to qualify for this zone. So they've already, you know, they're already at that level. I don't see that, you know, there's a real need for this. Bill?
Can you do an adjustment review for open space? I didn't think you could.
You know, as, currently, yes, you could adjust the amount of open space. This is proposed, as part of this proposal.
As part of later, that, okay.
The recommendation is that you wouldn't be able to adjust the amount of open space, but maybe how you provide it.
Okay.
So where are we with this one, folks? Are we okay with the staff recommendation adding language to ensure that within, then, in the overlay zone, multifamily developments are exempt from the open space requirements if a minimum specified density is achieved for the base zone? John?
Yeah, why is staff recommending this? Why are you recommending this? Is there already a plan in that overlay zone that already identifies how much open space there will be elsewhere? And this is just building the units in selected sites?
No, I mean, it's really, I mean, if I, for instance, if I think of, you know, where these areas are and what the intent is, the intent is to obtain higher densities, and the intent is to have an area plan that will identify, you know, where the open space is. And typically, these areas do have, you know, open space within- is, and typically, these areas do have, you know, open space within the nodal development overlay zone.
So anyone who wants to build in a nodal zone, be it R1, 2, 3, whatever's there, has to come and get a plan first that identifies where open space will be.
No. I'm talking about, there's, it's not just a property that's designated nodal development, it's an area that is designated nodal development, those typically have a, have open space or parks in them already.
Well, I don't know if this will help you, but there's not a prescribed process when you have the nodal development overlay about how that project will come forward. There's four areas that we have right now, two of those areas have what you just described, kind of a master plan that kind of shows how those are to be developed, even those two different in terms of their specificity. For example, Danabo does include identified park site that the city's purchased and is identified to serve that surrounding residential area. So that one happens to have something that prescribed. Crescent Village isn't quite as prescriptive in that sense, so they can come in different shapes and sizes, which I know doesn't give you a lot of comfort, but I guess the point I would make is, as we look at this, we've got a handful of sites that we're talking about right now. There's really, I think, a big question about whether additional ND overlays will be at all within our strategy in the future, for some of the reasons some of you already identified. So from the family of kind of looking at it citywide, I think we're in a pretty limited range of geographic areas that we're talking about, some of which already have master plans for how those are going to develop anyway. Downtown's the one that doesn't, Lower River Road is, doesn't even have a project, if it did come forward, my guess would be it probably would have some kind of master planning effort that would happen, but we don't know that for sure. So from my perspective, there's not a lot on the table that we're talking about here. I think it's a fairly small family of geographic areas that we're looking at. Begs the question for larger stuff later on, but I think right now, I think that's more the question for you, how big of an issue is this, given that it's limited geographically? John?
So, I guess I misunderstood, so we just said we were going to remove the minimum density issues for R2, 3, and 4, and this would say except for nodal development, correct? And I think it ought to be across the board.
Across the, what do you mean by that?
I think specifically those areas such as Lower River Road, which frankly, currently is not in any kind of a nodal development plan, you have individual lots.
Right, right.
I think it needs the same protection as the rest of the city.
You don't support the exemption for nodal development?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so let, so let's go back again, where are we with this one, folks? Ensure that within the ND zone, multifamily exempt if they meet the base requirements. In favor?
Can I clarify, you're saying, voting in favor of removing the exempt?
Yeah. Who is in favor of the staff recommendation that would add language to ensure that within the ND overlay zone, multifamily developments are exempt from the open space requirements if the minimum specified density is achieved for the base zone? Are you in favor of that staff recommendation or opposed to it? Those in favor, let's see your hands. I'll go three. Those opposed? John, the burden is on you.
I'm not, I don't know enough.
Okay.
Because I know that the nodal goes behind Crescent Village, it goes all the way over, and there are plots there that I'm saying, they can, they can be R1, 2, 3, or whatever, and they can do whatever they want, I don't know why they're exempt.
So...
Because there's no one looking at what they're doing.
Right.
Because Crescent Village had to put in a whole plan and get approved.
And maybe this will help, given if there's a split vote here, because we're probably going to see a few others, is my guess. Keep in mind, as we make recommendations to the council on this, if you do end up with tie votes, it doesn't mean we can't convey the concern that you have here, so perhaps some of these die for lack of majority, but at the same time, we convey this concern to the council. So if that relieves maybe a little bit of anxiety to get majority votes on everything you do here, I just, I kind of stress that as kind of our backup plan, to be able to convey where we have close votes, what those concerns were.
John, are you done with your thinking?
Well, I'll make it a split. There you go.
Okay. John Belcher?
So that begs a process question for me, how is what we're doing here going to be reflected in what goes to council?
Well, that's something I think for you to think about, maybe I can just try, given the pace we're working at here, maybe that, I can try to help a little bit. It's a recommendation you're making, you're not doing any kind of final action here, it's simply a recommendation to the council. There's no documents, there's nothing else, other than the draft code language that's moving forward, as well as anything else we want to add to that, that conveys kind of your thoughts on this.
Yeah.
I think for today, what might help is to use that maybe a little bit more to our advantage here, rather than kind of killing ourselves about getting majority votes on every one of these items, let's get some of those key points down on paper, and we can convey those to council, and not worry as much about whether it's a 3-3 or 4-2 vote.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, John?
Yeah, and what you just said, then, if we vote to support something, it's not a split vote, you also mentioned the draft proposal that's sent to the council. What are we doing that will change what's in that draft I'm looking at? So that when we're done today...
Right.
We know that some are questionable, but this has been changed in the draft.
Right, and so, well, I don't know if you want to jump in on how it moves forward at this point, to the degree we can make some, where there's kind of been clear direction about particular line item stuff we can change in the code that goes to council, based on your direction, we will do that. Where there's other issues that maybe were more debated, we may not change the code, per se, now, but simply say, here are the issues that planning commission wrestled with, pros and cons about some of those concerns. I don't know if you've got more specifics you want to add to that, but that, that's something we're going to have to maybe take a little bit of license with here as we move forward, depending on what you say today.
And I would like to know, before I leave, as we vote on each one, which ones are you taking license with, rather than waiting and seeing it at the city council?
Yeah, and I think we can play that by, well, for those that I think we have a simple line item change we can make, that's probably going to be the types that we will try to make changes to now.
Okay. I think we're done with that, that one as well. Nobody tagged the third row, so we're down to the fourth one, and John, this one was one of yours, this is 9A1C2 indoor common open space.
I just supported what the staff was saying, that it should be changed to windows or skylights, and not be a combination of both, depending on where it would be physically located in the building.
Rick?
Just to clarify, you would support one or the other?
No, I would, we're changing the AND to OR.
Oh, okay, I was going to suggest...
That's the simple word.
I was just going to suggest AND OR, so you can count both. It seems to me the way it reads it, you either count one or you count the other, you don't count both, and I think the staff intent was to count both, I think.
Correct.
I would suggest AND OR.
AND OR, any problem? I think we're gaining some momentum here now. All right, now we're on the next page. First row, there were no comments on that one. The second row, outdoor common space, Bill, you want to comment on that?
It really just got to, on the 15 by 15-foot area, I'm, I'm fine with the 225 square feet, but to have to have 15 by 15-foot area seems to reduce some flexibility, and if we could do maybe a 10 or a 12-foot and still keep the overall square footage, that would be my preference. I mean, 15 by 15 is a pretty good, pretty good chunk.
Are you suggesting, then, to stick with the proposed language that staff presented? That would be the third column from the left.
Well, no, it still says to be designed to fit a 15 by 15-foot square entirely within it, and it goes on to say the minimum dimension, but it seems to me that if you can do the, let's say you did a 12 by 20 space, a 12 by 20 space would meet the 225 square foot area.
Almost.
No, about 240.
It'd be 240.
Oh, 2...
So it would just meet the square footage, but a 12 by 20 might be more usable, depending on the design, and I guess to have a little bit more flexibility, because if you can't put a 15 by 15 into that 12 by 20, then you're dead in the water, and I guess having a little more flexibility, to me, seems to make sense.
Steve?
Well, I was just going to comment on what this came out, because it came out of the ICS, and it just, again, this comes directly out of the Portland code, which I think is a very mature code, and we're talking about, it's flexible in that you have to be able, the goal was to have, you could fit at least one 15 by 15-foot square inside this contiguous area, which could get narrower, you know, it could be 10 feet by 80 feet, and we're talking about the entire property, you know, an entire development, so we're not talking about a lot of open, I mean, this is not a lot of common open space in a, even in a typical small lot, so, and the goal here was that you couldn't essentially just use, you know, if you, if you make it narrower, if you make it much narrower than 15, like if you make it 10, then you can count the front setback, which is already a requirement anyways. Of course, we're allowing all kinds of intrusions, and this, this came out of the old code, which had a, you know, the old code had a minimum dimension of 15 feet, but you couldn't count it at all if it wasn't, if any area was smaller than 15 feet. Well, we changed that, so now that, you know, it could get to be 10 feet on the side, so you could have, you could have a nice, large, open space area on the side of your project, and you might have a little bit wider, you know, at the very entry to it, you know, the, so that was the goal here, to make it so that you can't, you know, use front setbacks, I mean, because if we said, if we said the, you know, that the dimension, you know, minimum dimension was 10 feet, then it could be the front setback, which doesn't, you know, it's not, you know, we're not gaining anything anymore. So, that was the purpose.
I'm not compelled either way.
John?
I would support the 15 by 15, only because, and I have questions later in here, it doesn't suggest then a minimum, you said 12 by 20, you know, developer might come in with, what, 8 by 24, then 7 by, and as a result, you're stuck, where you don't really have, if you have a lot of people living here, they have to have a place where they can at least semi-congregate, not just say, well, we can maybe play bowling or something, but, you know, other than, other than that, I think that that makes some sense.
I'll respond to that, I guess my feeling is, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we go no minimum width, I think we still need a minimum width, and I think that should either be 10 or 12 feet, and, you know, hearing the sentiment, maybe 12 is more palatable, but it just, it just gives a little more, from an architect's perspective, it gives a little more flexibility as you're laying out the design, to, you know, sometimes we do these, you know, squares, since you've got to plop down on the, on the property, and depending on the particular piece of property, it may or may not make sense to do that, and, you know, so you get funny little chunks out of the corner of your building just to, just to meet a requirement that could have been met, maybe with a 12 by 20 instead of a 15 by 15, so that, that's just my, my approach.
John?
Staff illustration does ND look a little weird to me, because it shows a flag that's giving 15 and 12, 10. So I guess I'm moving towards the idea of, say, with the 12 rather than saying a 15 foot square.
Yeah. Steve?
Well, again, if I go back, the reason that we didn't do it that way is you don't want to, we wanted to allow 10-foot wide open spaces, you know, that could be used profitably on the sides of the building. So now, as soon as we go 12, now we're, now we're making it harder for developer to, you know, to, you know, take their open space and put it all on one side, you know, like on the south side of the Sequoia project, for example, you know, they, they made it a little wider and they, you know, so that was the reason that we didn't do that, because now, since, you know, now if you make 12 feet, now we've made it harder, now developers are not really going to like that, because now they can't, you know, they have a 5-foot setback, and they just go to 10, and now they can count it as open space and make it more...
I don't, I don't hear Bill saying change, change any of the setback requirements, just how that 15, how that 225 square feet is configured.
Right, but the problem is, once you change that, and say it's a minimum dimension of 12, that you have common open space, and it has to have a minimum dimension of 12, then you can't provide it on the side of the building anymore, without having a 12-foot wide setback.
But you can't do your 15 by 15 on the side of the building without having a notch out of the building.
No, this, the drawing is inaccurate, the drawing that's most, most, makes the most sense is the one that's, it's the right corner of that first top drawing, not the left one.
So example A on the right side?
Yeah, example A on the right side, or example, you know, B, you know, in the front, you know, so the, the what that they're showing there, that doesn't make sense, you're not likely to do that, you're going to either do the example, people follow what we're saying, this one, or, you know, and so again, we can change it, but then we get into all the complications, and then if we try to allow, to make the code easy to administer, to try to allow that, say you could provide contiguous open space on the side of the building of 10 feet, and yet we want the minimum dimension to 12, you see what I'm saying? So, and I think this is why Portland adopted this, because it's easy to administer, you have, it's got to have a minimum cube in it, a square in it, but then the dimensions can be all over the place, up to some minimum that you decide. So that was, I'm sure that's the reason that they chose that, it just gives you a lot of flexibility, and it's relatively easy to administer.
Alyssa, you're saying staff is not opposed to the change recommended through the public comment, does that create any more flexibility than what you proposed?
Well, and then the, the public comment is actually slightly different than what Commissioner Randall is talking about, this comment was, because right now, you're required to have a 15 by 15-foot square, and then you can, you know, narrow down to 10 feet, the public comment was, is to allow for that 10-foot to not have to be connected to the 15 by 15.
Okay.
You know, I think we would support flexibility, we would support design flexibility, however that, you know, whatever form that takes.
Well, first, let's put this on the table, is there any, any objection to the public comment? There is objection to that?
Well, you're going to end up having little, you could have little discrete pieces that don't, any of them function themselves, in other words, you could have a little 10 by 10 piece here, and a 10 by 10 piece here, and they're not connected, and you lose the ability to, as you say, congregate, so I think they have to be contiguous and not can't be separated, as I understand it, I mean, but I also didn't think about the things that Steve brought up either.
I was assuming that there would still be the minimum area of 225 square feet that was required for any single area, so if you had an area that had a minimum dimension of 10, you'd have to get to the 225 square feet, so you couldn't do 10 by 10.
So it's not a total 225, is any individual space equals 225?
Right, so your minimum area of, of, a piece of common open space has to be 225, likely...
I misunderstood.
That changes your mind, John? Okay. Generally, at least, at one step, then, adopting the public comment recommendation is okay with this group?
What is the...
Require at least, well...
Steve, it would allow that 10-foot area to exist and not have to be contiguous with the 15 by 15.
But it still has to be 225, so then all you're saying is one piece has to have a 15-square-foot area, and the rest don't?
Okay, well, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, I mean, the goal is to have at least one area that's usable, I mean, these 10 by 10 areas really are not...
I mean, you'd still have to, you'd still have to have one, I mean, this will be interesting, right, you'll still have to have an area that's 15 by 15.
Okay.
But if you have more open space, you need to provide...
Right, I have no, I have no problem with that, that, in fact, that went along with what we discussed at the ICS, where you'd have multiple, you might have multiple common open space areas, so as long as one of them was, met this minimum requirement of 15 by 15 square.
Well, and I guess that was my, really, my only comment was, rather than 15 by 15, that it be a minimum dimension of 12 with the 225 square feet, not, not changing anything else in that, I was only focusing in on that one, that one aspect of it. But I'm, I'm okay being on the losing end of a vote, you know?
Yeah, I mean, so I'm the advocate for this, again, out, you know, outside, 15 feet is a very small dimension, so I would be reluctant to change that, and I think it's perfectly reasonable to expect, have one area that's, you know, big enough that you could, you know, more than someone could lie down and stretch their arms and legs and touch both sides of it, so, almost, so...
All right, well, let's see where we are here with this.
I guess that was what I was going to suggest, if we just...
Yep. Who is for, let's see, I don't want to say this, the draft, the proposed code amendment, modified according to the public comment, who's in favor of that? Steve, I know you were, so at least raise your hand, so...
No, this is, we're talking about the second line on page 54, right?
Second row, that's correct.
Second row in the fourth box.
Yep, so we're taking the draft proposal... Correct.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so who's in favor of that change? Steve? One, two, three, four? Again, to two? Four to two? Okay.
And my only, like I say, if, if it were the 12 feet, I'd be fine, but that's my only problem with it.
John?
Yeah, I didn't realize how much weight the public comments would be carrying. Now, just a question, and these public comments, are only public comments that came from the public hearing?
Uh, they are, they're actually, I tried, I attempted to go through all of the public comments that we have received since these code amendments have been out there, and, and put those into the chart.
I went through them all this weekend, and there are a lot that aren't in here, and I didn't know they would be looked at this way. Otherwise, we would be going through a lot more in detail. I just thought we would either look at what was recommended, what's in the proposal, and what's over on staff, some weighing of this, but not carrying the weight that you are going through.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting it carries more weight or not.
But there's a lot of omissions, is what I'm saying. From what I've read, there's a lot that could be under public comment that's not in there, that's different than what's in there.
I thought Alyssa did a pretty good job capturing it all.
You know, I attempted to be as thorough as possible. There were a couple that we thought that you, you all had discussed, and that we had already made the changes, so some of those are not included in here. Um, it's, I am human, so it's possible I missed some.
No, I understand that. Like I said, okay.
I mean, if there's some that you think that aren't captured in here that are really important, then I would recommend that you bring those up, just like Bill brought up his suggestions.
It's hard now, I can't remember all that I read, but I was. Okay, just asking, okay.
Okay, we're on row three. Rick, this was yours.
It's been so long, Randy, I'm not sure I remember now. Go ahead, without it, at this point.
We're okay? All right. Down at the bottom.
I'll go with it earlier, okay.
Down at the bottom, Rick and Steve, you all wanted to talk about this one. This is 9A2C, Steve.
Okay, then, this one is just, I've, I've, I've had this concern before, and I did some, made some wording changes in the code too, which is on page 74. And again, this, this differs from what the ICS recommended. We didn't require a certain percentage of the front setback be attached to the, to the, the, or the way it's worded now, it's minimum dimension of, must be above a front line for a minimum of 20% of the total lot frontage, which I thought doesn't give developers the flexibility. That, what we had come up with was 20% of the contiguous open space. So, the changes I proposed to make are related to add at the very beginning, common open space in R2, R3, and R4 zones. In other words, this does not apply to the C2, to these other zone, the C3 zone, or whatever, that we may apply to the C1 zone. So, open space in those zones can be put wherever you want. But our goal was in the multifamily zones, that some of it be visible from the front. So, our, what we had down was, must be 20% of the contiguous area, the common open space area must be, must above a front lot line. So, in other words, some piece of the front, of the open space must above a front, front lot line. So, in other words, it's visible, it's added to the neighborhood. It's not all inside a donut, a courtyard, or back behind, you know, completely back behind with 5-foot setbacks you can't see. So, that was the goal here.
Okay.
And that's what I'm proposing to change.
Steve, okay, just for clarity, the draft says, it proposes to require a portion of the outdoor open space above a front line. Public comment says eliminate it. Staff is saying they're not opposed to eliminating it. What, what are you suggesting, that we stick with the, with the draft language?
No, I'm suggesting that we change it so it's not 20% of the front set, whatever it's.
Lot frontage.
Yeah, maybe if I gave you an example, say if.
What are you suggesting we change it to?
20% of the contiguous, of the common, of the common open space area.
Response to that, Alyssa?
You know, Christie and I struggled with that. We had the original ICS recommendation, and as I wrote in here, we tried to meet that same intent. I think what we struggled with is how you make an area contiguous to a line, that it just, it's not clear and objective in our mind, and we applied it differently when we read it. So, that was what we struggled with. I think I understand the intent, but once you are in the code, it's subject to some interpretation. So, that's why we changed it, and we really are trying to meet the same intent as the original ICS recommendation.
If I could give you, illustrate with an example, let's say we had a 55-foot wide lot, wide lot, okay? And this, this would require 20% of that frontage now to be, you know, to be part of the common open space. Well, that's fine, but now, let's say we had a 150-foot lot. Now, we need three, now we need 30 feet. In other words, the, the whole goal was the indoor, the open, common open space might go down the side. It may not have to go down the front. And this is forcing it now to be down the front, because the way of its, the way it's worded. Now, maybe I didn't, we didn't word it exactly right, but our goal was just to say, a chunk of this area is visible, you know, is like visible from the, the street frontage. I mean, and, you know, we use the word a but, contiguous area. In other words, it could be a long strip, like the drawing shows, but, but it's, it's still, it comes up to the front set, you know, front lot line. Again, that, that was the intent. The intent, that was the intent. And the way it is worded now is you, now you've got this requirement that you, you know, if you've got two lots, then all of a sudden, now you gotta, basically, you're providing it all in the front setback, which was not our intent.
So, say again, you would, you would change total lot frontage to what?
20% of the, in R2, R3, and R4 zones, so that we can forget about. That's, you know, common open space, the common open space, outdoor open space area must, but, 20% of the common open space area must above a front lot line. So, it doesn't require you to have a certain dimension along the front lot line, just says this common open space, some of it must above the front lot line.
Bill?
So, what I, am I hearing you say, then, what that does is, by not requiring the 20%, actually gives you more flexibility in the way it's laid out, and that by requiring the 20%, you're actually forcing it to be at the front rather than along the side or around some other location? And that really, the issue's more that it's contiguous, not the actual dimension?
Right. So, it gives you flexibility. Again, we're saying 1/5 of the common open space sort of has to be visible from the street.
Wider the lot, then the wider that gets, and then the harder it is to.
Right.
Be flexible. I think I.
And this was what we originally proposed, and maybe staff could figure out a way to, you know, word that well.
I understand your concept, I think is a good one, but I also hear what they're saying. What if it's an irregularly shaped open space? How do you then tie that to? I don't know how you measure it. I mean, I understand the intent, I don't know how it is clear and objective in the code. Unless you say 20% of the width. And I, I see the problem that creates, but 20% of the total area has to be visible from the front, that seems really.
Well, it's not visible, but right now, we say it must above the front lot line. So, in other words.
But how do you abut an area to a line? That's the problem. Without saying that percentage of that line has to hit, you're talking about one dimension and two dimensions, and how do you make that work?
Well, you could say.
You have a two-dimensional standard that you're measuring one dimension.
Yeah.
Or three-dimensional, two-dimensional, whichever it is.
Well, you could say some portion of the contiguous area that's, must be 20%, and must above the, you know, doesn't, doesn't say any dimension.
But you're measuring an area by length.
You can see what I mean, right?
No, 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 we're not measuring an area by a length, that's the whole point. We're just saying 20% of the common area has to abut the front lot line. There's no length, there's no length measurements.
So, the spaces on the front lot that hits the front lot line has to contain at least 20% of the area?
Right. There's some, yeah, there's contiguous open space, which could be, if you go back to the picture, right? You know, if you go back to the picture.
I think what John's getting at is, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Rick. Sorry. I think what John's trying to say is, if you do an area, does that mean 20% of it could touch 1 inch of the front line, and that's okay? And how does staff say that really works, because you got the strange shape out there, is what John's getting at, is.
Kind of getting back to the old flag we did before.
But we've already said that the minimum dimension is 10 feet for, on the side of the lot line. So, I mean, it can't get to be 1 inch, that's the whole point.
Yeah.
It's contiguous, you know, it's a contiguous area that we, you know, so we've set the minimum dimensions already, so.
Staff is not opposed to eliminating this requirement, because you, you point out, like, where there may be families with children, having the open space along the street's not ideal, and we're just forcing that open space.
You did hear from at least one architect who, who works on some of the affordable housing projects, who said this would be problematic.
Yeah, well.
And then also, actually, developer Crescent Village mentioned, they would like to provide open space, you know, between the development and the lower density development. This would be, make that difficult. You know, one, one idea would be to limit its scope. If this is really important in a particular area where there are smaller lots, as opposed to where there are larger lots, I mean, that's, there definitely some options to look at.
But how are you going to measure smaller versus larger? I, I, you know, I can appreciate the ICS's committee's issue with all this, but it seems to me it's very problematic, trying to figure out how to come up with something clear and concise and objective. I'm, my inclination would be to eliminate it. I mean, it's just too innocuous right now. John?
Would it be useful, Steve, if we just said in the South University and West University neighborhoods, which generally aren't family, and generally aren't Crescent Village?
Well, again, I mean, I think that would be fine. I, I, I mean, that, that helps out the, the areas where we're seeing the R3 and R4 development. So, that's fine. I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Just, it makes it more difficult for staff to, you know.
I don't know what else maybe there's are.
I mean, well, because you still have to describe, you still have to.
Okay, well, let, let's do this. Two things, we've got just eliminate it, or just limit it to the university areas, okay? Who's, who would support staff's?
Also change it.
Pardon?
There's also change it. I mean, Steve's suggesting.
Yeah, but my, my problem is, is that.
But that's the third thing we do.
Okay. Okay, so first, let's go with this. Staff not opposed to eliminating this requirement, who'd be in favor of just eliminating this requirement? Three to three. Who would be in favor of limiting it just to the university neighborhoods?
If I'm in favor of eliminating it completely.
Well, it's three to three, so if.
I would look at them separately.
Yeah, look at them separately.
Because you don't know what council will do with it.
Yeah. So, limiting it just to the university neighborhoods, one, four to two, and trying to wordsmith it to be clearer on its intent, who would be in favor of having staff do that? Three to three.
I think we should work on making decisions by consensus.
Well.
Good luck.
Good luck, yeah.
Sorry, I'm, sorry, I'm so much.
Well, now, you have, Steve, you're, that's why you're at the table, to bring that. It's just, these are difficult, detailed, complicated issues that aren't easy to always resolve, so. All right, here, here's one that ought to be a little easy to go. It's on page 55. It's the first full row, and that's John Belcher, Bill, and Steve. So, which one of the three wants to take the lead on that? Private open space.
Is that mine? No, this, John, sorry.
No, J O N, John.
No, mine's the next one.
Oh, sorry.
I'll jump in if nobody else is.
Okay, Bill.
So, I, I just, we, was commenting that we don't really define fully enclosed, and the changed code language just says private open space may be covered, but may not be enclosed, or may not be fully enclosed. And, and I guess we should, I'm just thinking, we should have some definition of what enclosed is. Is that, is that walls on three sides that are a minimum 42 inches high? Or, you know, I guess my recommendation would be that to define enclosed as walls or screens at least 42 inches high on three sides and roofed, that that's the definition of enclosed, but.
Steve?
And my, my concern was actually the code on page 75, where we chop out this requirement for private open space shall be separated from adjacent private open space by walls, screens, or partitions. And I was confused by that, because it seems to me, you would want to have some separation between private open spaces from adjacent apartments. In other words, it's not like a motel balcony that goes the whole way. So, I wasn't sure why this was removed. Maybe staff could.
I kind of jumped ahead to the next page. I don't know if you want to stick with this particular.
Is that on the next page?
Yeah, it's on the next page.
Okay, all right, then let's hold off on that.
Okay.
So, Bill, you want to repeat your?
Sure, let me get back there.
The proposal is private open space may be covered, but may not be fully enclosed? Does that mean it may be, or it shall not be fully enclosed? It may not be fully enclosed? Doesn't have to be?
Well, if it's completely enclosed and it's not open space.
Right, then it's no longer open space.
Oh, okay.
And not be.
And I guess my suggestion.
I was thinking of the trash can. Sorry.
Yeah, you don't want to enclose the private open space.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
You want to enclose the trash.
Yeah, I'm sorry, all right.
And I guess my proposed wording would be defining enclosed as, quote, having a cover and walls, screens, or partitions over 42 inches high on at least three sides. And that seems to be consistent where, with where I think we're going with some of the balcony things too, so.
So, it could be up to that.
Up to that. And up to that is not enclosed. Once you hit that or exceed that, then it is by definition enclosed.
You don't have a three-inch strip across.
Yeah, and I guess my, my point is, not so much how we define it, but that we define it.
Rick?
Just to clarity on that, when you say not on three sides, so I've got the wall of my building, and if I have more than 42 inches on each side, then that would be fully enclosed, even so the, the other one is wide open?
If it also has a roof.
Build a patio.
Mm-hmm.
Got my house back here, got two walls 42 inches high, that's fully enclosed.
Or if it's recessed between two.
Like an alcove.
Yeah.
Because that's my, I'm going to do this for.
Darn you, Rick.
I've been, we've been writing code for a long time around here, and it's always the.
You could just make it on four sides, and it eliminates the issue.
Right, so if it's.
Yeah, so if it is on four sides.
We can add something.
Does that work?
Yeah, we can add.
Well, again, I think the other question you just brought up is, okay, now it sets back three feet into my wall, so.
As long as you don't have a wall on the other side, on the exterior side.
I'll let you guys write the code, but I think you get the idea.
I get it, right.
Are, are we okay with where we're going with this, folks? Good. Okay, before we change our minds, let's move on to the next one. John Belcher and Rick, you had more questions about balconies.
Well, you may recall, I talked about the hotel that I was in in Portland, in the neighborhood's backyard. I would suggest that balconies that face R1 properties not be included.
Not be included?
Right.
They do have to be 10 feet back, or no, what's, five?
They're an intrusion.
They're not, right.
They're not an allowed intrusion, so they'd have to be five feet back currently unless they're in that transition boundary, which depending on what we land on, on that could be five or 10.
I may be overly concerned about this, but I do, I have a strong feeling that you don't steal your neighbor's backyard privacy. So I, I would, I would prefer language that says you can't have balconies that face R1 property. Minimum, I would not want to let it for open space. Because I think as you get denser and denser, the, the value that one has in privacy is not having someone looking down on you while you're barbecuing, or whatever, sunbathing, et cetera. So I wouldn't want balconies on that facade.
Of course, my R1 backyard with my R1 neighbor behind me up the hill, their balcony looks into my backyard.
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah. Steve?
Especially if they're five feet away.
The question that I ask would be, would this, are you intending that affects? This right now only affects R2, 3 and 4, so we're only talking about R2, 2, R3 or 4?
A budding R1.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Not your case.
Within what distance? I don't understand, not facing or how far, what are you talking about?
Not on that wall.
Even if it's far, far away?
Well, it's not, can't be far, far away, it's on the building. The building's not that far away.
Yeah, but they may be somehow layered with open space here and on the other way 30 feet away and it looks like R1.
And you see.
But John, does this, does this code section address your issues? This just talks about.
Well, I'm talking to the fourth column, it says add the following code language, for buildings in any zoning district open R1, balconies that face a property in R1 may not be counted towards the open space requirement. So it's a, it does, it removes the incentive for people to put balconies looking into R1 backyards.
Page where we are now?
He's right here.
Okay. In buildings, for buildings in any's other than R1, okay.
That doesn't mean they can still do it.
Well, I prefer to say they can't, but I know I'm not going to get there, I just don't want to reword. None of you were in the planning commission when we went to Orenco Station, but when we did, they very carefully made sure that the wall that faced the very small private space the R1 had didn't have a way for the neighbors to peer down into that space, and I think that's the wise design. It's maybe a 5-1, that's okay.
So what's your, I'm sorry.
I'm suggesting we incorporate that proposed language.
Yeah, okay. So, who would be in favor of John's recommendation that we add that, that code language there that's under public comment? One, two, three, four, I'll go with that, five to one. Okay, the last row, Bill and Rick, minimum private open space sizes.
And I also had a comment, too.
And it says, oh, you did, okay, and says, "Staff supports requiring a minimum 20 square feet and a minimum dimension of four feet for private balconies to count as private open space." That, I think that's the, that's the, as I recall, the Anzlo recommendation?
I don't think so.
His was, his was 20 square feet, I remember correctly.
Oh, I thought it was 20.
Maybe I'm reading something you're not reading, where?
So, Rick, at the bottom of.
We're at the very bottom.
Yeah, and then it flips over to the other side, it has the staff recommendation on it.
I thought, granted, you said staff recommendation was 20.
No, 20 square feet and a minimum dimension of four feet, that's on the next page.
My page is upside down, sorry, my page is upside down. Got it? Oh, maybe I got it.
It might be on the, it's on the back, probably.
Yep, I'm sorry.
There you go.
I'm sorry, I, I'm in support of that recommendation because I've had a real problem with, after traveling a lot, there's a lot of very useful balconies in the world that are only four feet wide. Almost every European city you go to, that's pretty typical of what balconies are. And my question was, I think six by six takes quite a bit of extra structural development to, I don't know, it's going to be your question, if you've got a six by six, it takes a whole lot of extra work to get that done.
Okay, so you're in favor of the staff proposal?
Right, yes.
Yeah, John, on AIS page 17 is Gordon Anzlo's recommendation, think a good compromise, four feet minimum, clear dimension, 20 square feet minimum area. Any problem with, with going with staff's recommendation, 20 square feet, four foot minimum dimension? Okay, sounds like we're good with that one. We might even have consensus on that one.
Would it be outstanding if we could get here in open space?
Okay, on page 56, the first one there, looks like the first two, private open space, Bill and Steve, you all had comments about this as well.
And if I could just jump in really quick, because we actually did make some changes.
Yeah, you did, page 75.
On page 75 of the code, and let me tell you what we did, is that we heard a couple of different concerns. One was, you know, are the, is this clear, does this make sense? Then, you know, we also heard recommendations to eliminate it or to change height. What we had originally done is separate it out, so it talked about private open space at the ground level and then private open space provided as balconies. But then we got to thinking, and then, you know, just looking at projects, we actually don't screen balconies, they have their railing and then, you know, then there's another balcony down the way, but there's typically not, you know, if it's a balcony on the outside of the building as opposed to a recessed one, you don't see, you know, screening provided on those. And, you know, just thinking about how that looks and knowing that there would now be limitations on the number of balconies you could have per floor based on the intrusions, we actually want to drop the second thing that we had originally added about providing screening between balconies. And that's what we intended to do there.
On nine, where are you, 9B2?
I'm on page 75 on, yeah, B2. Do you need to add that?
Uh-uh. It was our intent to describe the, the screening and buffering, I mean, that was the intent, not really realizing the implications to balconies.
Okay, so having staff jumped in, Bill and Steve, where are you guys at with this?
Mine was just definition of enclosed, again.
Oh, okay.
And mine was concerns about not having any screening and not, and having sort of that motel-like, and you can imagine, again, there's some limitations on intrusions, but the way it's written now, you could have intrusions for 50% of the, the, 50%, of the, you know.
That was one of the things that we improved.
Facade, so you might have a 100-foot building, you could have 50 feet of balconies, I mean, it's not likely, but you could have a whole series of, you know, 12-foot balconies that are units and, and there's no separation between them, it just seemed a little odd.
So does staff's modification address your concern?
Well, no, because they're removing the requirement for screening between adjacent balconies, which to me doesn't make a lot of sense.
There's going to have to be a railing, I mean, there's, like, the code, the building code would require a railing, so there will be separation.
Well, why would there need to be a railing if there's no, if there's no, if there's no difference in, you know, there's no, there's no elevation change, you know?
So just to clarify, there is a difference, the code doesn't allow for main access, you can't access externally from the outside of the building more than two units. Balconies, we did define, that was one of the proposed ICS changes, that were defined as access from the interior of the unit, you know, so it's, it's not viewed as like that hotel or motel walkway, you know, that would be the point. I, you know, I don't know that this code prevents an exterior balcony that connects those, we have not seen that, but it wouldn't necessarily prevent it. So that was the other part, is if you did have a big, long balcony potentially, would you want that same, you know, railing between the, the users, but, you know.
And with the, I mean, the amendments proposed under allowed intrusions, we're only going to, we would, if approved, would only allow, you know, 50% of a, of a facade to be, you know, intruding, so.
And that would be front yard, because balconies aren't even allowed in the interior yard, so, just a clarification.
Rick?
That just shocked me. I understand what you're saying. When I look at a lot of apartments that have individual balconies, people who want to have that visual screen tend to do it themselves, but a lot of them prefer to have the openness to be able to look out around.
Okay.
I understand your concern if they were all attached together, and maybe that's a way to resolve it, but I'm not sure that we want to screen balconies if my balcony starts here and yours is 12 feet down from mine and that's where yours is, I don't think we necessarily want to tell somebody they've got to screen those balconies from just looking down the way and seeing your neighbor standing out on his balcony or her balcony. So I mean, I've got a concern about that. I also had a, and I'll bring this up at a later one on something else on that, but would that resolve it, is, is talk about the la, you know, detached balconies or non, the only one I think of which I find interesting is the second floor of the Tate has the common balcony, and I know a couple of people that own units, and they love the ability to, to sort of coexist with some of their neighbors on their own private balcony areas.
Hmm.
The division that's occurred there, people who want to have a little bit of break, maybe by the window or something, come in and put a plan or two there just to create their own visual break. I mean, I, I think what we're doing is we're protecting people from themselves all the time with our code, and I don't know that we want to go there in life, I hope not.
Well, I don't.
Oh, Bill's actually, yes, sir. John?
Yeah, I, I just get confused on the definitions here of what screening is, I mean, to me, if you're going to have a balcony or something up on the roof and you talk to safety, you have to have something around it so people don't fall off. And to me, if that's just a wrought iron fence or something, or something, or, or a wall in some cases, how does that differ from screening if it's 42 inches high? That's what I don't understand. Is screening something that's solid, that you can't see through, and is that what you're saying? Because, I mean, every balcony I've ever seen has a railing around it, why, why is, and it's 42 inches high? How's that different from screening? I, I'm confused because, you know, if I had a roof terrace, I definitely wouldn't want, I would want something around it, and it's not so much for privacy as it is for safety. And I don't understand the difference if it's only 42 inches high. If it was 6, 8 feet, then I would say, well, now you're getting into screening and that's beyond safety.
I think the main thing to point out for us is that it was meant to be a separation between common space and private open space, because common open space has a minimum of 15-foot minimum dimension now, private open space has a minimum dimension of 10 feet. So it, the code just requires currently screen and buffered, meaning there's just this separation, something defined, because otherwise they could say, well, that's all private, because then they get to reduce the minimum dimension. I mean, that's how creative that they get in those situations. So what is that, that's what's not clearly defined, what's screened and buffered, that's the current code, how it reads today. So that's what we were trying to bring some clarity from, you know, forward, bringing that forward. And the piece of that, to me, is, you know, the railing is a building code issue, not necessarily needing to be regulated by us, that's going to be required no matter what in those situations. Is that the intent? I think so, it was meant to just separate it, it's, it's separated, it's there, it's that individual unit's private open space, it's separated from anyone else's, not so it can just bleed together. That was kind of the intent.
Bill's got a comment?
I was going to jump back in. I, I think what I'm hearing Steve say is that potentially you could have a design where you have a contiguous balcony over several units.
Right.
And that those then, with that coming out, are not separated by any kind of separation unless the unit owners or renters decide to do that. What I was hearing Rick say, though, is that the Tate, as an example, through design, again, flexibility in design, has contiguous balconies that some people really like. And so I guess my thought is, I'm, I'm a little less concerned, or, you know, less concerned about taking this out than, than leave, leaving it in to create a separation, because what you're doing by leaving it in is you're forcing a separation then, because you wouldn't necessarily from the building code have to have a railing between those if it's all just one balcony. And so by forcing that separation, you may actually be hindering socialization in, in those units. So I guess I would err on the side of giving some flexibility. And, you know, I mean, I, I don't know of too many architects that would design this building with this big, long, shared balcony for six unit owners over half the facade unless there was a really good reason for doing that. So I, I don't have a problem taking that out.
Steve, did you have a comment?
No, I was going to say, I really don't have a really strong concern about this, and again, my concern was only when they're adjacent, not when they're looking.
Right.
So maybe you needed to work, insert the word adjacent, but I'm comfortable with removing it at this point, too. I just wanted to raise the issue because I just wasn't sure what was the intent.
Rick? Just a, a quick question on the new addition, it says a minimum of 30 inches in height that visually separates the private open space. I don't know how you, how does something 30 inches high visually separate a space?
Mark's territory, landscaping.
Defines the space.
It's the idea of landscaping.
Well, but that, that's, that may be physical separation, but I don't know how that's.
Oh, it would hide toys or something that were, you know.
Oh, boy, we're social engineering now.
We can get rid of visually if you want.
But I just, it seems to me that if somebody came in and you said, well, you have to build this 30-inch-high wall that visually separates you from the one next door, it's like, explain to me how that is accomplished, I don't have a clue how that would work.
So with the elimination of the words "and visually," is everybody okay with the change to, what is this, 9B2?
No, 1B1.
9B1.
Yeah, I had a question on that earlier. The 30 inches in height, since you're talking of landscaping, is that at the time of planting or it'll grow to that in a couple of years?
Well, I think, based upon how it's written, it would be the time of planting.
Has to be, has to be at least 30 inches?
Yeah, yeah, I would say so.
Okay, thank you.
If they choose to use plants to accomplish that, yeah.
Are we okay? It's okay, we're all right.
And what about the elimination of 2, is that?
Yeah. John?
No, I thought you were going to ask for both.
Why, kind of, what, okay, all in favor of, okay, Rick. Just, we're quarter after right now, we've got, can we do this? Can we take some time and try to get through this first topic while it's fresh in our minds? And then also, before we leave, cruise through the other five topics and identify areas of concern, just to give us some, some sense of where we're headed with that.
Are you saying we're here for 2?
Hopefully we won't be, okay?
It can't.
Okay, let's see how far we can get then.
So wait, when did we get to 2? Did we do anything about 2? Or was that 1 and 2?
I think we've concurred with 2.
Okay, perfect.
Did we, just a question on 2, did we want to leave the word visually in that, for that case, that was the ground floor, private open space separated from public open space?
I don't think there was a problem with visually in, in 2, was there, Rick?
Oh, it's in the new number 2, it's in old 3.
It's in the new number 2, not the old number 2.
Yeah, I actually meant in both, 1 and 2.
Oh, you did, okay.
Sure.
So the word.
And what we agreed to do is remove "and visually."
And visually.
And visually, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was just clarifying.
Yep. Okay. In 1 and 2.
There will be another comment about it.
That's okay. Ah, okay, let's see, where are we at on the third row? We on the third one now?
John had a, John Jaworski had a comment about, I'm just going to cover this real quick, under C, what was old number 2, it says move to A7 above, and unfortunately, then I renumbered everything, so it was actually moved to 2D above, it's actually even still on the same page if you just travel up to the top of the page.
Are you talking code or are you talking grid?
I'm talking code, I'm sorry, sorry, on page 75 of the code, under open space credit, number 2, it starts required setback areas, and it's crossed out, and then it says move to 4A above. And I renumbered 4A, so it's actually been moved to 2D. And it's actually still on, it's on the same page, it's the very top of this page, it's still there.
Your concern, John?
No, I just said, I, I, when I went and looked for move to A7 above, I.
Yeah, I just didn't, I didn't get the.
The first question is, are we okay with the staff's recommendation to not include, that is to remove, the words publicly owned property? Any objection to that, John?
Wait a minute.
Okay.
So the, the staff comment, or not the staff comment, but the public comment was to add public school or publicly owned property, staff has been strongly opposed to publicly owned property because that could be the atrium building.
John?
You don't want that to be open space? Come visit.
Well, I think it goes all the way across, if you have a piece of university property that has a front yard in it and you're saying that's open space and the university says we need to turn that into a full-size building, either you lose the open space or they can't do it. So I, I don't like this at all.
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to be opposed to changing it for the same reasons, because you really don't have access to it, or you may not have access to it, put it that way, then. So I couldn't support that.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, the same way, I mean, you're not going to set up a picnic in front of the South Eugene High School and a barbecue. You know, it's just, it doesn't substitute for park space.
And I actually thought Paul Conti had a good point about the quarter-mile, is it radius?
No, it's by, it's by, quarter-mile by-
Shortest route.
By shortest public.
His point, though, about actually having access to it, if there's a physical barrier, if you're within a quarter-mile of a park and there's a physical barrier to it that you really can't get to it, should that be counted as open space or access to a park?
No. We changed that to-
We changed that.
To travel.
Well, we did, as measured along the route of the shortest existing public right-of-way. It used to just kind of be as the crow pile.
Okay, so we-
You hit a freeway.
Yeah. You get a freeway or railroad.
He's with the old when we're talking.
No, I think he's saying, what if you got to the park and you couldn't get in?
No, actually getting to, yeah, no, no, actually getting to the park.
Okay, okay.
But that's taken care of.
Yeah, that's current code.
Okay. All right. All right, shall we, John?
I just had a question, just to make sure. When it says public park, that means it's developed and usable? It's a functioning park? This is not parkland?
Parkland.
Parkland, then I can't support it. It's not usable.
The existing language is, is public park.
That's current, mhm.
Rick?
I would prefer to see a developed public park or a functioning public park. Otherwise, what good is it?
City owns lots of properties in the area where I live that are not developed. They're just-
Well, but it's not, the way I read this is, it's been designated as a park, not that the city owns the land. I would argue that I have an undeveloped parkland at the back of Bond Park, that we enjoy getting in there all the time, because it's a very natural area. If you're talking about a developed park, I don't know that I want all my parks to be active recreational, got park swings and baseball fields over everything.
I'm talking about a park that's nothing. I mean, you can't even get in there, or if you do, the only thing you can do is for a dog or something to run through. And I have those where I live that have never been developed as parks, but they're public park, parkland.
If they get lost.
So they're still lots, but they're just like-
Are they dedicated parks?
Well, this doesn't say dedicated park. This one's quarter-mile of public park. That's what I have. What is the definition of a public park?
Okay, I don't know about both.
That's about all.
What was the intent here? For what, isn't it that it's supposed to act as a supplement to replace what I'm going to do for open space, so therefore it must be something that's usable?
Well, you know, I would say that open space takes a lot of different forms. There are trails up in the south hills. I mean, I see people using vacant lots next to them. In fact, I live across from an open space that is not developed, that is well, it's heavily used by children and by people with dogs, and it's not, it doesn't have any recreational facilities. There's not a picnic table, but yet it is heavily used. So, I mean, I think the intent was to, you know, it's publicly, it's access-
It's open space.
It's open space, that it's publicly owned, which means the public has access to it, and it's-
As opposed to what's required in a private open space, I'm trying to, what would a private developer, you know, developer provide in a private space necessarily that would be any more than just open space and trees?
So you're saying when people build these multifamily units, they can have an open space that's theirs, just let it grow and be anything they want, but it's totally usable? If you have a dog, you can let him out. I'm trying to be facetious here, but I'm saying it's not usable for going out, sitting in a bench, or having a talk with your fellow neighbors, or doing whatever. That still counts as a credit? That's what I don't see.
Well, I mean, for common open space, you can have lawn or hardscaped areas to be used for active and passive recreation. So it may or may not have amenities. It could just be completely a lawn area. Now, whether or not they mow it is completely a maintenance issue, but they could just be allowed to have a lawn.
Or a garden.
There is no requirement for a table or any kind of horseshoes or anything like that? Steve?
So I assume we're still, you're just concerned about the definition of public park?
Well, that's all I ask. What do they mean?
Right, because what we construed this in the past, when we changed this, is by public park, we meant, we construed this to be a park owned by the city of Eugene.
Designated.
Or the county.
They're not, huh?
In other words, not an empty lot that's owned by a property owner who could put a fence at any time.
Right, right.
But not necessarily a developed-
No.
-private or a public city-owned park?
No, it might be an undeveloped park site that, or, you know, left for that reason in an undeveloped state. But it was a publicly owned-
And I imagine there are some city-owned lands that are specifically designated not to be developed, aren't they, in that?
Some that are definitely lesser developed and some that have yet to be developed. I don't know if there's any-
I always want a city-owned land.
You okay, John? With the explanation, anyway?
I'm not hearing support for the public schools or the publicly owned land. Is that where we are?
That which is not the public park, you know.
Oh.
So the recommendation, or the stat, the public comment were to allow for schools, you know, universities and other schools in open spaces. So I wanted to get-
Okay, are, well, yeah, are we against adding publicly owned schools, universities, in open spaces? Really?
I see my end for question.
Yeah.
Or for comment.
Okay.
They want to vote, I think.
Oh, I thought you were asking for a vote.
Well, I was. I thought Rick had a question, so.
I have a question or a comment, yeah.
About this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I understood when you started talking about the university, that made sense to me, because of, it's really intended for the use of students and that kind of thing. But I've always considered the local school playgrounds, sport fields, and all those kind of things to be public area that we all use. I mean, I grew up doing nothing but playing in schoolyards, you know, and that was just a commonplace to be. So I was, I was in general support of that. I understood, I had a little concern about the university as sort of something different, but, I mean, around my neighborhoods, we use schools all the time. My kids play, my grandkids play soccer out there all the time in the ballfields and everything else. So I always considered that to be a significant open space in my area, my neighborhoods.
John?
Schools are not permanent, as you know. They turn into all kinds of other things.
Parks aren't permanent either.
Well, but it's much more likely that park's going to stay apart from school and stay as well.
Steve?
And the same concern is, you know, like, I use the example of South Eugene rather than the university. And you can't set up a barbecue in the front yard of South Eugene, you're going to get, they have liability issues for those places. And you don't really see, you might see somebody walking your dog near the playing fields, but people don't use those areas anymore. Maybe they did in your neighborhood, but where I am, they don't use those areas unless they've been given permission to use those areas.
People do them differently than parks.
So, you know, parks you expect that you can go to and use. You don't need to get permission from the school. And, you know, that's, unfortunately, that's, you know, what I-
Okay, well, let's do this. Who favors, who favors universities being public parkland?
Count as open space.
Is open, sorry, is open space. Universities is open space. Nobody does. Okay. What about public schools count as open space? I would go that way. So we've got four no, two yes. And let's just be clear, how about other publicly owned property that is not designated as parkland, using that as open space? All in favor? Nobody. Okay. Is that- Rick?
I think the Delta Ponds are owned by the state of Oregon. Am I going to assume that the Delta Ponds then would not fall into city-owned public property?
Actually, I think they are city parks.
I said city or county or whatever.
Yeah, it just says public park.
Sorry if I led you down the wrong path.
I didn't know state, because I didn't know we had any state parks in the city of Eugene's.
So does that take us past the open space credit issue? John, you had, I had you down on all of them there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Assuming that we're going to go with the staff does not recommend making the change of private parks, et cetera.
Correct. I think that's correct, right, Alyssa?
Say that again.
Going with status quo. John, you want to restate your issue?
Current code language.
So if we don't raise any objection, your proposal not to include private parks looks forward?
Correct.
Got you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, can we, can we try to tackle adjustment review and definitions before we bug out of here? It's 1:30.
Would you rather know where our issues are in order?
Well, right now, I think I'd rather finish this one, while we've got some more. That would be a good idea. Yeah, okay. Well, let's finish this, John.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, adjustment review, Rick and John Jaworski. Rick?
My concern with adjustment reviews, and it's becoming, because it's, they're fairly, these seem to me kind of vague, is a way that I could build a case. They're always sort of challengeable, and, I mean, we hear all the time from people building that if, if I'm looking to develop a property, that I know I have to go after an adjustment review, I basically don't go after that property development. So, I mean, you take it off the books. This one, to me, is sort of really an open, kind of an open book on this. It's like, the way I read this, the adjustment review is pretty much for anything that you have a problem with in this code language, where usually I think of adjustment review as fairly specific about, you know, if you want an adjustment to this small item, you come and get that. Now, you probably deal with adjustment reviews more than I do. This one, to me, just tends to be a wide-open book that if you can't fit, you can come in for an adjustment review, and here's all these vague things that you can talk about to say you could work at, get an adjustment review. It just, it just doesn't seem to fit well as we have, as we've done other adjustment reviews, in my mind. It just seems, it's a big, broad, open bowl. If you don't like anything in here, you can come in for an adjustment review and try to do all these vague things.
And that's actually been, the reverse has been what's been problematic, when somebody comes in to adjust one little thing, and actually we don't get to look at the rest of the site design. So I actually favor something where we get to look at the whole thing as opposed to one teeny-tiny, you know, thing that they're playing with over here. So, I mean, there's something, the other hand. And, I mean, adjustment-
I like that interpretation a little bit.
Yeah, adjustment criteria are, you know, there's going to be discretion involved, absolutely. That's why it becomes a land use application. We did, you know, make it clear, hopefully it's clear, that you can't adjust the amount of open space. So if you still have to provide 1,000 square feet, you still have to provide that 1,000 square feet. It's the flexibility of where you provide it and how you provide it.
John? John Jaworski?
I think that's, basically, my question was addressed.
Okay. Bill?
Well, and I think I would agree with Alyssa, because what I see this allowing is kind of that bridge between following the letter of the code and doing a PUD, because PUDs are very expensive, and the adjustment review process allows for modifying things while still meeting the intent without going through the whole PUD cost process. And, you know, we do deal with adjustment reviews a fair amount, and it's, you know, it's still, you still get neighborhood notification and some of that. Some are planning director decisions, some actually go to public hearing, depending on how extensive that is. But I think, again, giving some of that ability to have some design flexibility without going through the full-blown PUD is helpful.
John Daltch?
You sort of answered most of my questions, although added vagueness to me. There is an opportunity for appeal.
Yes.
What's the minimum appeal level? Hearing's official?
Correct. So typically, these would be a planning director decision unless they're coupled with a higher application type. So it'd be planning director approval, or, you know, planning director decision, and then appealable to hearing's official.
Okay. And what is your perception of how often a red adjustment review is used? I heard you say you use it often, but do developers-
I wouldn't say often, but occasionally.
Context is everything. It depends on the location. So there are developers in, you know, the Suna-Wuna neighborhood groups that are not so inclined to do adjustments because of the potential for appeal. So they weigh their flexibility on that point. I mean, they either, then they basically have a choice to meet the code-clearing objective.
And we've had clients that have elected not to do adjustment reviews, because they don't want that extra time and potential-
And the notification.
And the notification and all of that, just, it drags out the process. I can't.
So they're frozen costs.
Mhm, absolutely.
Steve?
Just some background from ICS. We actually were opposed to sticking an adjustment review on the open space, because just, but I really don't have a problem with this. I do, I do agree with you. I think it is, although you like the flexibility, I think it's very vague, and we should really look to the Portland code and how they nail these things down in a much better way to make it a lot easier to administer, and so that there aren't so many questions about whether you're going to get appealed or not. So, because when you make it this vague, then it's just, there's no really way to determine compliance, from my point of view. Take the same sentence and turn it around, and it's either compliant or not. So I, I'm, I'll live with it, but I don't really think this, I don't think this is good policy. We should really look at other jurisdictions and how they handle it, like Portland, adjustments that have more clear and objective ways of the alleyway.
John?
So there's two pieces here about-
Two pieces, yep.
And I think one is the amount, and the other is how you do it. And I think I would view it very- So maybe we should add any-
Oh, okay. So the first one, dealing with open space, staff believes revised language, the revised language is clear.
And that's about whether or not, that, that the amount of open space required cannot be adjusted.
Okay.
So you can adjust anything except-
Except what?
Well, I'm not sure. It's what the code says on page 76, the recommended is that the requirements set forth in the open space standards, except for the amount of required open space per table, blah, 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 may be adjusted if the applicant demonstrates consistency with all of the following. And that table that is referenced is the table that tells you how much open space you have to provide.
You know, it says can here and cannot there. It really is cannot be adjusted.
Right, okay. Everybody okay with that one? Okay, what about the other adjustment, added criteria by which to make adjustments? No? Is everybody okay with the added criteria? Okay, all right. Then the definitions, Bill and Steve, you guys had some comments about that.
I would just take out, without additional independent supports, the balcony definition.
And I just worded it differently. I just added with or without, which is the same, so.
Yeah.
So, but it clarifies that you could either have or haven't, can't. So it's not vague about whether you can have it or not. It says either you can or can't. So I think it would be a little better way of dealing with the same issue.
You're okay with that? Anybody else have an issue? Okay.
What else is there?
Well, if you're with it, we have.
Well, generally, I prefer just simpler and less words, but-
I think the intent was trying to be clear on what was counted for those allowed intrusions and the massing that that basically creates in those front yard and interior yard setbacks. So the issue really, as far as really defining a balcony, only really needs to occur in those locations where there are allowed intrusions come into play. So we are limiting the amount, so if you have a third-floor balcony, but it has, you know, support columns that come to the ground, are you going to count then that, the width of that against your allowed intrusions on every floor versus a balcony that's protruding off the third floor? It's not a question of an allowed intrusion in those other, on those other planes of the building. So it was really trying to eliminate the massing of those intrusions coming further into the allowed, you know, into those front yards, specifically balconies, obviously, and making it clear to, you know, what is counted against a balcony, you know, when we're limiting it along the facade of that floor. And that's what we are seeing, where, you know, those columns that come down to the ground, is that then not a balcony, or, but it's an intrusion, so do we care? Really, I mean, that's the question for you guys to look at.
Steve?
Well, the most common balconies in our neighborhood are essentially as entry porches with a balcony above, or a stack of balconies. So in other words, you have a situation where you have an intrusion below already. So, you know, again, what this is, what I find about this is it's, it seems problematic, because now, that's the most typical one you'll find. I mean, you see Gordon Amsoil's projects, and those are used all the time. You've got a covered porch, entry, and above it is the balcony. So this makes it confusing. Well, is that not a balcony, because now it has independent supports? And, you know, both of them are intrusions.
Right. And we do see that. That's correct.
So I'm concerned about making it difficult for the developers to understand what we mean here.
So that wasn't our intent, was, you know, to eliminate the potential of putting a balcony over the top of a front porch. So that could be something we could look at. The intent was more to clearly define- The intent was more to clearly define-
I'll email you.
-the balconies that were coming off of the planes of the wall, serving just, you know, that unit space. And those do occur as well. And they'll have a support column that come all the way to the ground with no porch or anything underneath. So I guess we need to look at, maybe clarifying, we could say, unless, you know, we do count those, because the porch is counted then. So then maybe we count it as an allowed intrusion on that floor as well.
Steve?
I just want to add, I know of no, I don't, I don't know of any, I don't know of any, I know, know of almost all the cases in Western University that are done the way I described. Either it's a stack of balconies or it's a balcony over a porch. I don't know of any cases where it's, it's literally columns to the ground and it's not, you know, used, you know, as some other kind of covered area. Now, it doesn't mean that it doesn't occur, but it seems like that's the more norm, and I just want to make sure that we somehow don't-
Well, currently, we don't define balconies. So as he stated, we do allow that. That is not an issue. We don't limit the amount of intrusions along a plane of a wall either. So, you know, those things are permitted today. We do allow those currently under our current code. I think that by defining balcony, which is one of the proposals that came out of ICS, do create challenges for us. And how we apply those in those specific situations and those design elements can be challenging to divi, define all the different scenarios that we might see. I, I think that is one of the challenges we had, because this was one of the things I, that if recollection serves, was partially in the allowed intrusions piece. We put it into definitions because that's where really the issue comes up, is in the allowed intrusions.
John?
Yeah, I, I guess I grew up with the wrong definitions. I mean, if I ever went somewhere and had a porch and I walked out on the second floor onto the roof of that porch, I would never call that a balcony, that's a roof terrace. I mean, I don't see how that's a balcony. To me, a balcony has always been something that's sort of hanging up there. It's not supported underneath. So I don't understand.
Would this help you if you used roof terrace? Wow, but that could also mean that's on top of-
Right, right. That's what-
But that's what I mean. I don't understand how, I don't know why that's called a balcony. If there's a porch and you can walk out onto the top of it, it's not a balcony.
But from the porch, it feels like a balcony.
Yeah.
It looks different from looking towards it, but once you're on it, is there a difference?
Well, it's no difference if you're on the top of your roof then, if you're looking out, it's the same.
And I could see where that would be a roof terrace. So I think some people would call that a roof terrace too.
Mm-hmm. Even like if it's some, I've seen where they've done some bay windows projections and then the upper level will have like a balcony, quote unquote. It looks like a balcony, but it's on top of that bay, which could be considered a roof terrace as well.
So what is the real question here you're trying to figure out?
Do we need a definition? I mean, that was one of the, the proposals that we're, we've, you know, been struggling with.
Steve?
We thought you needed a definition because you, we're allowing you to count it for open space, so we needed some vague definition. Again, I, I would err on putting in with or without columns or taking out the things about supports there, because I think the issue of intrusions is not as much of an issue as defining it for open space. I think, you know, I think we can deal with that later on.
I think we're, I think we're wordsmithing it too much.
So you would strike without additional independent support?
I could go either way. I would either strike it or do with or without.
So let me throw out the, the absurd endpoint, which is you've got two basically walls projecting from, a series of walls projecting from the building facade, which have balconies on every level. Is that okay?
That would be considered a balcony because it typically projects from the wall, but doesn't always have to.
But I'm saying you have basically massive walls separating each of the balconies that support the balconies as well. Now, that's a much different-looking building than cantilevered balconies on each, and I don't know if that's an issue, but it's-
I don't think it's an issue.
I don't think so, yeah.
Okay. It's not an issue, it's not an issue. I'm not that much into it.
I mean, I think, I think whatever we do, there will be something that will come up that will make it an issue. And I think no matter what we do, somebody's going to figure out some way to screw it up.
Okay. I'm, I'm good.
I mean, we could also-
I have cynicism, I'm sorry.
We could also look at putting in the definition for purposes of defining open space. I mean, that could be another way to fix the problem as far as why we're defining it, what the purpose of-
Why don't you do that? Does that sound okay to everybody?
Well, again, I think we've got the same problem again. You want to be able to count the ones that are on top of a porch. So I don't-
Right. So we would, we could say that and strike those.
But see, I think if you, if you just say with or without additional supports or take that out completely, then the one on top of the porch qualifies.
Right.
But the porch already qualifies because it's a terrace. I don't understand. It's current-
It's a terrace.
Why, terrace is not counted. I mean, what do you mean not if it's roof? Well, if the roof isn't adapted to serve as a balcony. The roof of it counts as a balcony, but the porch still counts as a porch.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure that, I don't think that's a problem.
Are we permitting porches, let's say, on, not on front lots, but on side lots to property? I don't get it.
Only up to two feet and they really, it's not, it's just the eaves. So if you think of two feet, it's like, there might be an entrance and they'll just extend that eve out, it'll define an entry, but-
That's where I saw the issue, is if, if you're on a side for setback and you put a balcony in, that's this, but now all of a sudden you put something down there.
Except we said the minimum eventually was four feet, so it can't be a balcony.
Well, and the other thing I was trying to clarify too as well is balconies are not allowed intrusions in the interior yard setback. Aren't currently and we're not proposing to change that. So all these, you know, things that we're talking about are not relating to interior yards, they're relating to the front yard. So to be clear on that point-
Be interesting to discuss, but not today. I don't know why you wouldn't allow it.
Does-
They're allowed.
Right, they're allowed, but not in the setback.
Okay, but why not in the interior?
Are, are we okay?
In the courtyard.
The courtyard, that's not the setback.
Are we okay with the bill, Steve Hybrett here of deleting, or, say it again?
Well, Steve was suggesting with or without. I was suggesting taking it, taking out without additional independent supports. I don't really care. I mean, I think both of them achieve the same thing.
With or without then?
Either way.
With or without makes it clear that it doesn't matter.
Right. And I, I think that's a good point.
We okay with that, gentlemen?
I'm not, because then that's a major intrusion on a budding property that goes from this balcony all the way down, no matter how far. And I think that's not the same as, there's a balcony hanging up there, but now there's something that goes through the second, third, whatever, how tall the building is. And I just don't see that.
Steve?
Again, the point here is this is talking about it's, it's applicable to open space. We can deal with the intrusions from that when we talk about the intrusion measure. That is not, what we're really talking about is open space area and how, you know, what we consider. So, again, if we have a concern about that, we can look at that when we get to the intrusion measure. So I don't really think that that, I mean, I don't think that affects this directly, because we have an opportunity to deal with that if we consider that a concern.
That is correct.
So with that, with John Jaworski's caveat, please make a note, and what I'm going to, I'm getting a sense of one, two, at least three or four to one are okay with putting with or without.
Okay.
But let's make sure that we address John's concern when we get to the intrusions aspect of this, okay? And, and with that, I think that takes us to the end of the first step here, right?
I'm sick.
Yeah. And so what I would like-
The toughest ones, though, I will.
Yeah, this is, this is typical. This is the hardest one.
So, so this is, we only have an hour set aside at our next Monday meeting for this. So what I'd like to suggest is if you could send to Alyssa the exercise that, that we tried to do this time, and that John and Steve, if you would, reference row number and page on the columns, what your concerns are. And please, let's not just say page 59, row 1. Let's identify what the concern is and if you have a suggested resolution, please identify that. Is this all doable to Alyssa by, what, close of business Thursday?
Okay.
Fair enough? Okay.